If I could have your attention, we'll go ahead and get our meeting called to order. I hope everyone is doing well on this Tuesday afternoon. We did move our meeting, normally would have been yesterday, but with the Martin Luther King holiday, we moved our meeting to today because City Hall was actually closed yesterday. And I hope that you have the opportunity to spend some time with your family and reflect on the service of Dr. King. It's been a little bit different this year, as you're all aware. We don't have our breakfast and our normal days of service and things like that, but it doesn't lessen the spirit and the intent of respecting Dr. King and his memory and the work that he did for this nation and for civil rights, especially in the time that we're living in now with the challenges that are facing our country. So I hope that you did have time to honor his memory, and we will continue to do that. I'd like to call first on Reverend George Graham. He is with Springfield Baptist Church, and Reverend Graham is going to give our invocation. We're so appreciative to you, Reverend Graham, of being here this evening. And following that, I'll call on Councilman Johnny Terrell to lead us in our pledge, and then we'll get started with our meeting. So Reverend Graham?
Good afternoon, everyone. We do honor God the Father, God the Son, and God the Holy Spirit. We honor our mayor. Thank you so much for the invite, and to each one of these district's leaders and the other officers that make up this illustrious body of the Tifton Leadership Team. We are certainly grateful that for this invitation, I don't know, I think this is the first meeting, and so I'm really excited, as well as honored and privileged that you would allow Springfield to be the first church to bring the prayer. So with everything that's going on in our nation, especially the COVID situation, and with us having inauguration on tomorrow, before I give the words of prayer, let us bow our heads for a few seconds of honoring those that have lost their lives to COVID-19, and all of the folks that are helping to minimize and alleviate some of these problems. So let us do that. Eternal God, we come with bowed heads and thankful hearts. We come Heavenly Father first, thanking you that you are God, and above thee there is no other. We ask that you forgive us of our sins and our trespasses as we forgive those who sin against us. And then, God, we just want to thank you for blessing us to see another day. Thank you for bringing us through all of 2020, and now into 2021, another year that you have made. We ask of God that you bless these leaders of this great city, the friendly city, and we ask that you anoint them with a special anointing so that they can do the business of this city. God, we are so thankful that you blessed us to be here tonight. We ask not only that you bless Tifton and its leaders, but you go throughout the state of Georgia and bless everyone in Georgia and throughout the United States of America. And then, God, be so kind enough to bless the entire world, look down on all of us with an eye of pity, and continue to cover us with your precious blood and your grace and mercy. Father God, we thank you right now. We love you so much, Lord, because we know you first loved us. And so we ask these blessings in the name of Jesus, your son. Let every heart say amen.
Amen.
I pray to the nations who do the flag of the United States of America, and who are devoted for what which stands, one nation, a hundred dollars, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Terrell, and thank you, Reverend Graham. We appreciate that very much. I do want to acknowledge that Councilman Hall is not with us this evening in person, but he is with us on our phone, so that's why we have the speakerphone here. So MJ, can you hear us okay?
Yes, I can.
Okay, perfect. All right, if there's anything that you need, you just holler, and we'll stop if you have anything, comments that you'd like to make, and I'll remember to, I'll try to remember to call at any different time. So make sure you're still with us. All right, we do have, for those of you that are with us this evening, we do have agendas on the podium here. If you would like to grab one and kind of follow along with us, you're welcome to do that. The first item on our agenda is approval of the agenda, and Jessica always does such a good job of sending these out to us in plenty of time, and noticing the public and all of the various media sources that we need to notify when we're having meetings. So you should have had that in your email a couple of days ago. So that being said, I will take a motion concerning our agenda.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay, all right, so we have motion second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or the opposed. Thank you, okay. The next item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes, and we do have a couple of meeting minutes that are in your packet. We've had two back-to-back meetings, and those minutes are there, so I will take a motion concerning those minutes.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
No second.
All right, thank you, Wes. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
There you go.
All right. The next item is public comments. Jessica, do we have anybody that, probably not, I don't think there's anybody that would like to address the council for anything, so I just want to be sure. No, okay. All right, well, we'll move right on into our presentations. We are honored to have a couple of guests with us this evening. We have representatives from our South Health District Department of Public Health to bring us an update on what's going on with the health concerns of the community. So Dr. Rowe and Courtney, I'll call on you, whoever would like to speak first, and we appreciate you being with us this evening, so we'll turn the floor over to you.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. Thank you for this opportunity to come before you and sort of give you an idea of what we have, are dealing with daily, have been dealing with, this nation's dealing with, this country's dealing with, the state, the city, this county, and all of our friends and family and churches. I just got updated figures on Georgia's metrics as of January the 19th. Came in actually while I was in here. And as of this point, Epidemiology Daily Sit Rep, I have our district epidemiologist with us there. As of now, there are 828 confirmed cases, 828,433 confirmed cases in Georgia. Of those, 47,000 have been hospitalized, and there has been a 14 percentage day increase of 18% in the last two weeks. So we are in the middle of what we anticipated would be a surge after Christmas, and indeed that surge has happened, and we're seeing it and dealing with it. And the other district numbers that I sort of want to give you, and then I'll get down to some TIF numbers specifically in just a moment. In the district, we have a total, have had a total as of the 14th. We do this weekly, the next one will come out on Thursday. Of 22,000 of these, we've had 343 deaths, and we are beginning to administer vaccines, and I'm going to tell you in a minute a lot more about that. We, up to this point, have administered about 3,000 vaccines in the district. As of the 14th, Tif County had confirmed 3,098 cases and 968 presumptive cases. These are antigen cases, so a total of approximately 4,000 with 76 reported deaths. Up until, through the 14th, there've been about 319. Just realized we started giving vaccines recently. Tif Memorial, Tif Regional Hospital, is it Tif?
Tif Regional.
Tif Regional, right. Tif Regional, I got these off the web today. As of, over the weekend, they had 90 COVID-positive patients as inpatients, and their testing site approximately had 350 with a 25% positivity. That means one out of every four. Approximately October, we had about a 5% positivity, one out of every 20. So we've seen this huge increase, and it's everywhere. It's every community, it's every segment of every community, and yes, there's been the surge that we thought would happen. It's even worse than I'd expected, quite honestly, with you. Tif Regional presently has 71 inpatients with COVID, who are COVID-positive. On the 14th, the United States sit on the brink of 400,000 reported coronavirus deaths. Actually, that has occurred as of yesterday and today. And the pace of vaccinations has been somewhat slow to roll out. I'm going to tell you about that in just a minute. There have been about 30 million vaccine doses, but less than half of them had been administered as of a week ago, and then lots of problems, lots of logistical, huge logistical problems in doing it. And it's not necessarily a local problem, it's a national problem, it's a state problem, and sometimes even some of the southern states have had more of an issue than I've heard today. Nevertheless, we are making progress. As of the 13th, Georgia had about 145 COVID-related deaths last Tuesday, which is the state's highest single total recorded day, single day since the pandemic began. The CDC statistics show that Georgia's rate of in-vaccinations last week and/or this week are definitely improving. However, we, in spite of the fact that we've made great progress, we have run into all kinds, as I said, logistical problems and stumbling blocks. I want to give you a little bit of a timeline. We were told Friday, December the 11th, after about two months of hearing about vaccines over the news, in the media, in medical literature, in public health literature, we were told on Friday, December the 11th, that we could begin vaccinations by December the 18th, a week later. The first vaccination in South Health District was given on Friday, December the 18th, approximately a month ago. We were instructed to start Group 1A. Now, Group 1A, I'll get into in just a minute. Full steam ahead on December the 21st, and this is determined by the CDC's Advisory Committee on Immunization Practices. We continued vaccination through the end of December in Phase 1A with two holidays, and these were short weeks. We're told on December the 30th to expand vaccination to Group 1A-plus. Now, in Group 1A were thousands of people in our district. In Group 1A-plus are tens of thousands of people in our district, needless to say, in the county and the nation. The Phase 1A was added by the governor, making that much more, many more people could be and were eligible for vaccination. We opened an online registration for callback to set up an appointment on Friday, December the 31st, and by Monday morning, three days later, we had over 1,500 people registered for callback. When we came in and we started Phase 1A, which is approximately 10 days later, and about this time, we were getting hundreds and hundreds of phone calls every day to be called back for an appointment in every county in our 10-county district, including here, of course, in Tif. And saying that, Group 1A expanded to, there were added to that group adults 65 and older and their caregivers who had not necessarily been in Group 1A. We went full steam ahead in public health. We have 10 health departments, we have one in every county. The largest is in Lounes, and the second largest is in Tif. When we found out about 1A-plus, and 1A-plus is here, the governor added the 1A-plus. That included healthcare workers, nurses, physicians, EMS, lab technicians, environmental services, long-term care facilities, staff and residents, adults 65 and older and their caregiver, and law enforcement, fire personnel, including volunteer fire departments, dispatchers, and 911 operators. And again, that opened eligibility up by tens of thousands in this district alone. Saying that, we rapidly tried to ramp up what we could and would do and were able to do. The one thing that we've not been able to do is we don't produce the vaccine. We don't make the vaccine. The vaccine's provided to us. We have to request vaccines twice a week. We request the state vaccine, who sends us allocations. The allocations that we've been getting lately are about half of what we're requesting. So the state, every week, the state gets 120,000. Of that, 40,000 are automatically assigned to long-term care facilities. That leaves all the other eligible people in the state of 10 million, over, say, a million people that are eligible now, for, in our district, as I said, tens of thousands that were eligible now that had not been eligible, and yet we're getting half the vaccines we're asked for. And that's not necessarily the state's fault either. The demand is now huge, and supply is limited. I want to give you some more numbers about South Health District itself. As I said to you, your numbers here locally had markedly increased positivity rates in the last two, in the last two to three weeks, sort of since Christmas. Back in October, as I said, it was 5%. South Health District last week, on one day, was as high as 24% on January the 10th, and the average for last week, district-wide, was 13.5. Vaccination update here in Tif yesterday, you gave 60, today you gave 40. Now, that means we're averaging, and we can say probably trying to average between 40 and 60 today. We're, again, contingent on vaccine supply. We had a state phone call this afternoon from 2:00 to 3:00, 3:30, with the commissioner and the state personnel, and this is not just a local problem. Again, this is statewide. It's not just a state problem, it's a regional problem, it's the southern states, and it's not just a southeastern region, it's a national problem because the demand has exceeded the supply. And the supply, and we're getting, and we're getting as many as the state will send us, and we're getting about half of what we've ordered. All right, so up until today, in the last three weeks, we've given, as of approximately Thursday of this week, we'll have given 6,886 doses in the district. And we hope to be able to do at least between 2,800 and 3,000 a week in the 10 health departments. The allocations are made basically on the basis of population and with a system called Georgia Registry of Immunization Transactions. And Georgia Registration, Immunization Registration Transaction System is a somewhat adequate system. It's been around 20 years. They've tried to tweak it, update it. It has crashed several times because the volume of putting them in, we're required by law to put them in within 24 hours of, we give a vaccination, we're supposed to have it within the system within 24 hours. We in the government suck at doing that. Private sources are not as timely sometimes as we are, and GRET determines a large part of our allocation. So if you're giving it, and we know there are a lot of, this was discussed here today on the state phone call, a lot of vaccines that are being given are not being recorded into GRETs. GRETs are not, therefore, things that have not been given, and the allocation is not what it should be. And it's critical that it be in there, but we don't necessarily have control over that. Let me tell you about your Tif vaccination sites. As of today, these were the sources in Tif that were doing vaccination. Family Primary Care, Moon's Pharmacy, and we have partnered with them in actually supplying two small or long-term care facilities in Tif County. The New Medical Center, Omega Pharmacy, Tif County Health Department, and of course, Tif Regional Medical Center, which has a drive-in, and all those are up and going. The problem is, we're all running short on supply of vaccine. And as you are, as you're aware, the two vaccines we have now are Moderna and Pfizer. Pfizer has to be kept at minus 70 degrees centigrade. We didn't have a freezer in our district that would keep it that. The state did send one to the UGA campus here for that purpose, but it was not just for Tif, it was for Tif, it was for Lounes, it was for, it was for the Albany District, which is 14 counties in southwest Georgia. We were notified that they received some today, and we requested as many as we could today. Now, again, minus 70 degrees has to be kept off. We didn't have anything outside of Tif County that could do that. We just got another one at the Tif County Health Department, a small one, that in the last five days has to be calibrated, and we can keep them here, and it's already being kept on the UGA campus of, at the, I guess, at Aback, at Aback out there. I'm not exactly sure how that works, but that's what we've been told, and that's where we've gotten vaccines from before. We therefore leaned heavily on Moderna. Moderna, they're both two-shot regimen. Pfizer is three weeks. You have to have two, not just one. So if we're talking about allocation of vaccine supply, whatever the number we have, we've got to divide by two. We can't just divide by one. Johnson &amp; Johnson is in Phase 3 clinical trials, which means if it passes that, it has to go before the FDA. If the FDA approves it, then we will go, we would get, Johnson &amp; Johnson would be available. AstraZeneca is the fourth one. Again, the really good advantage we've heard about Johnson &amp; Johnson, if it becomes available, if there are no problems in the study, is it's a one-shot regimen. It doesn't have to be kept at minus 70 degrees centigrade. And again, that, when you thaw it out, one vial, we have to take it out of the freezer, thaw it out at room temperature, add the dilution solution to it, there are five doses. If you have not used those five doses, six hours later, you have to throw it in the triscan in your remainder. So what we're trying to do, we've had very few that have been today, we have up to this point wasted virtually none because it's such a precious commodity, but I want to tell you the difficulties in giving these, and are, you're hearing this, minus 70 degrees centigrade. Now, Moderna, we can keep it in a regular freezer, a regular refrigerator, zero degrees, but again, there are 10 doses in a vial. The same thing applies to Moderna. If you thaw it out, you've got to use it within six hours. You haven't used it within that seventh hour, by the seventh hour, we have to throw it in the triscan. Again, up to this point now, going into this, what, I'm saying, a month, I'm going to point out something here. The first case of documented COVID-19 in the United States was January the 20th of 2020, not one full year into this. And incredible what this world, this nation, this country has come to in that period of time. Saying that, we know that we're getting hundreds of phone calls, that we know that websites are crashing, we know that phone calls went unanswered, we know that people are not getting timely callbacks, they think they'll get one today. We got, we, I did hear today, the news in Tif, is they've caught up to the, we had a backlog in everywhere, and even, and certainly in Tif, but they've called up to that. We, however, last Friday, we cut, we shut down our, so we could do catch-up because there were so many people that had expected a phone call and have not gotten a phone call, and every afternoon at 4:15, including today, while we were driving up here, we go over how many vaccines have been administered in every health department, how many, how many they have on hand, how many patients they expect tomorrow, how many, do they have enough vaccine for those patients? And that goes on a daily basis, and how many do we have, realizing in a couple of weeks, three weeks for Pfizer, four weeks for Moderna? We've got to have a second dose. So all of this is just incredibly logistically complicated. We are doing as many people as fast as we can and doing the best job we can. And we're going to get to this, it's going to happen. We ever get to what they call herd immunity. For those of you, not many of you here are probably my age, but for my grandfather, I'm from Calhoun, Georgia, Miller County over in southwest Georgia, 2,000 people then, 2,000 people now, and my grandfather was a general practitioner. In 1955, he gave me, on a sugar cube, SALT vaccine for polio. And you may not remember polio back in those days. We were scared to death of polio in the 1950s. We were scared to go to church, we were scared to go to the community swimming pool, very few people had private pools. We were scared to go to the movie, we were scared to get out of the house. An aunt, 36-years-old, athletic, beautiful aunt, got polio, paralyzed and raced down for the rest of her life, and we were scared to death about polio. We've got SALT vaccine, saving vaccine. 60 years later, when have you heard of a case of polio? We don't even give smallpox. How many of you have a smallpox card? Okay, I do too. Okay, we don't even give smallpox to kids anymore. Why? It's gone. There is no smallpox in the world unless in biological warfare asked, and I can't say anything about that. Saying that, I'm sure that, sure, we do not, have not heard of a wild case of smallpox, and it's been therefore declared extinct, except unless there's some that we don't know about. Saying that, we don't see, we see very, very few. I hear there were like 10 cases of polio in the United States last year, and it used to be rampant in the summertime 50 or 60 years ago. And again, how scared we were, just like we are of this. It was not deadly, but it destroyed the quality of life for the people that are affected back in those days, including many, many children, some of whom I knew way back. Saying that, that pretty much concludes my presentation here, Mayor Smith, and we will be glad to answer any questions that we might have an answer to, realizing we're learning as we go with this. We don't have all the answers, we don't know all the answers. I mean, I can think of a whole bunch of questions that were asked on the phone today that the state doesn't have answers either. It's as we go, and I will try to answer that I can.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Rowe, for, we just appreciate the work that you're doing, and thank you for being here to share this information with us. So I'll open the floor up if any of our council members, the leadership team does have questions.
I do have a question. Doc, so the governor did say this, I'm glad to hear this. Did I understand you correctly, environmental services were added to the Tier 1, was that correct?
The shots?
Yes, sir.
Two, I'm sorry. My old ears, one thing, too many shotguns and too old age, and sometimes I don't hear as well as I had, especially with the mask, I can't read your lips.
Yeah. So the initial was for police, emergency services?
That phase one.
Because one of my concerns is my call to our local health department is the folks that run the water plant or the sewer plant, because if something should happen to those crews, it is a dire situation.
They will come in the next category of 1B, which is called the essential worker. Right now, we're getting into police, fire, we're getting into healthcare, we're getting into long-term care facilities, where the vast majority of people who passed away have passed away, even though we're seeing it in, a 36-year-old Lounes, a perfectly healthy guy, I knew him last week from COVID. Not everybody that's 70 and over anymore. So the answer is yes.
Okay. And just the two questions that we're getting a whole lot of, if you could clarify, please. If you can't get the second shot in time, what happens?
Don't think that we aren't discussing that every day, including at length today. How am I going to be sure I've got that second shot? You know, and right now, the state assures us that we will have a second shot, and some of the, some of the places, we understand, we were not, were holding back the second shot. So it appeared, of course, that they would just not admit it. We were, they were expecting to give them all up front, they weren't. They were holding back the second shot, based on that very same question you just asked. Saying that, the state is assured that we will get that second shot, and that's, I hope.
All right, good, good. And the second one is if, can different manufacturers of the vaccine be given? So if, if one person gets Moderna the first round, can they get a different? It has to be the same.
Right. They are chem, organically, chemistry-wise, different. They, they're different molecular, the molecules are different, so the immune response would therefore be different. And the answer is they cannot.
I have a question.
Sure.
If you called for an appointment but have not got a call back, did you call again or just wait?
Yolana?
Yes, sir. Um, we refer, if you didn't call, because we are giving such a high volume of calls, we will, we promise you, if you're on our list, whether the list that was created from the website, or you called in on the program directly and got on the list, we will be giving you a call back. Like Dr. Rowe said, we have caught up our list as of yesterday, but if you have not gotten a call, then trust me, we'll get a call back. It may take a few days because we have such a high volume of people that we need to call, but we will be calling back, because if you continue to call us, that clock will be off on that much further.
Well, that's what I was concerned about. So, sent time.
Yes, sir.
All right, any other questions?
Yeah, I've been thinking about, while you've been talking. You asked, you asked one of my questions, I was going to ask if you got the Moderna or the Pfizer, did you have to get the second, you answered that one. Is there one better than the other? Have you seen any studies? I mean, are they?
Both have 94, 95% effectiveness rates, meaning they took these, there were 70,000 people in these studies, and they gave, and it's called, in medicine it's called double blind. The people giving the shot didn't know what they were giving, the people getting the shot didn't know what they were getting, and then at the end, they were all, they were exposed in one way, shape, form, or another, and they got the ones who got the shot versus the ones who did not get the shot. And the computer was the only thing that knew the answer to that. There was a 95% reduction in those who got the vaccine versus those who got the salt water vaccine.
Right. What company are you guys receiving more of, or is it literally 50/50?
We have requested more of Moderna because we didn't have the coal storage, which we've been using, I would, I would say probably 80 or 90%. Now, the problem there, everybody else is doing the same thing, so all of a sudden, Moderna, they cranked up all they can produce, but everybody's using them because it's easier to use, you don't have that minus 70 degrees. So the supply is going down, and we actually made the decision today in Lounes County to shift to, back to Pfizer tomorrow, because we were, we were running out in Lounes.
Okay. And the second question is, is when an individual calls to, and I guess this would be a question for you. I apologize, this was already turned off. If an individual calls and requests for a vaccine, and they're on the 1A, 65 and older, do they need to notify the health department of their caregiver as well, or do they just bring them up there when they come?
So you're saying that 65 and older, that there's 10 here in 1A plus?
That's correct.
Yes, sir. They would even notify us at the time that the caregiver is going to need the vaccine as well. They would even put on a list of those, we only have the 10 doses in the body. We have to make sure we have those people alive for those particular doses, and if you bring someone extra, and we can't just open one vial or pour one extra person, because we may not have enough other people to get that vaccine. And then, like Dr. Rowe said, it's such a precious commodity, we can't outbase.
And that's why it is by appointment only. We have to know that we've got those in-house so we can thaw it out the next morning, because we've got to use it by the end of the day, and we don't want to waste any, I mean, it's such a precious commodity right now.
That's right. That's right. And I may have talked to you, because I called the health department, I got a whole bunch of information, but I shared it on my Facebook page, but, you know, you don't get as many views as you would like on some things, but others, you get all the views out of the sun. If you've had COVID-19, you cannot get the vaccine for?
90 days.
90 days. Okay.
It is recommended, however, that you get it, and lots of reasons for that, which we don't, we don't know. We know now, as of this, the last week or two, that there are, the antibodies from the shot in people who got the first in the therapeutic trials, six months later, they're still showing antibodies. Number one, that one good thing, you've heard some different strains now, the couple through, the antibody we're making to both the vaccines we're using is effective in the test tube, effective against the new strains as well as the original strain, up to now. On the 21 days for the second dose, how, how strict and how close do you have to be to that 21 days for it to be effective?
Let me answer. So what we try to do, one, currently we're using Moderna, so right now it is 28 days with Moderna. It gets a little confusing when you talk about the two different brands. But we try our very best to get the person back in on that 29th or 30th day. So if you get your vaccine, say on March 1st, we want to try our very best to have you back in by March the 30th. There is some leniency there, but just to make sure we have enough vaccine for people, we're trying our very best to stick right in there, right in about that 28th to 30th day.
Do we, do you have? I'm going to add something there that I just read in the last, I'm reading constantly every day, because new information come out every day. They actually have shown that if you get it a week or two later, you do, in medicine, there's a word called anamnestic response, which means you get the germ, the antigen, you get, your body recognizes from the first shot, and you get an accelerated production of antibodies at that point, and they've documented that now, even if you got the shot two weeks later. So even though we're trying to make sure it's more timely than that, the recent studies have shown that even if you get it later for whatever reason, that if you've had that first shot, the second shot a week or two later is, is you're still getting a response to it. Okay, so, but you do need it.
Okay.
For full immunity.
Got you.
I will tell you too, that about, according to the study I just read this week, the first shot gives you about a 50 to 55% immunity at two weeks. In other words, by, by two weeks after the first shot, you've got about 50% of the immunity ultimately you will get after the second shot. So if you were to get it, there, there is evidence now that it is not generally as severe if you've had this first shot.
Okay, thank you. And one last question.
Sure.
So is the Department of Health, are they tracking cases, individuals who have gotten the shot, who may have come infected? I'm not, I'm not sure if there's been any deaths since someone who has received a shot has died from COVID after receiving the shot, but are you guys tracking any kind of statistics?
We are observing them for 15 to 30 minutes immediately. There's an app that goes on your phone, I get it every day at 4:00 PM, because I've had the shot. It comes up, it says, how are you feeling? Are you, and it goes into a national database. So the answer is, is you get the shot, you click your camera on the little, whatever that thing's called, it's not the barcode, yeah, exactly. And it automatically installs it on your phone, and I get asked every day how I'm feeling, am I running a fever, am I sick in any way? It took, took me less than 30 seconds to answer the question. I've had both shots, I've had, I didn't have a sore arm. That sort of worries me, maybe I didn't, maybe I didn't do anything. But anyway, the answer is, yes, we do, we do. And we, Ken Lowry, he's our epidemiologist.
Oh, okay. To answer your question, we have a mechanism in place to track that. What we do is, we track all positive tests.
Yeah, exactly.
On SANS, which is a, we just like, an online application that we use to track and test positive in our county district. And this is basically where we usually draw our follow-up. We have, as Dr. Grove was mentioning, grids, we have a way to interface with grids. So if you receive the vaccine, it should interface with your encounter if you do test positive for some reason. So we do have a mechanism in place to track that. Unfortunately, it's fairly new, so we're trying to work out a chance, but so far it's not, we don't have any data that supports it anymore.
Right, right. Yeah, I mean, I'd be one of those, only what, 19 days old, 20 days old worth of information, and I would hope that nobody has, but, you know, it's just, you know, you have so many people who are in fear of taking this shot, you know, and I hope that they, you know, that fear goes away because.
Tell you a funny story there.
Go ahead.
When we first, the first day we offered the vaccine, the very first day, to all our health departments in all 10 counties, the 240, we had 40 takers and 200 refusers. Okay. Well, after they saw I didn't drop dead, they changed their mind.
All right, any other questions, Johnny? Did you have any questions or anything?
No, I'm good.
You're good, okay. And Johnny?
We have questions.
No, I'm good.
You're good, okay. Any other questions?
Good.
Okay. Thank you again so much, Dr. Grove, and thank you to our public health team. We very, very much appreciate the work that you're doing and your dedication and commitment. So that's all to you, and thank you for that. We appreciate you being here this evening. Thank you.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you for coming.
Yes. Okay, our next item on our agenda is to talk about the Southwest Georgia Relief Grant Award, and so I'll call on our friend Lori Felton, who's with our tree board. Lori?
Hi. I'm Lori Felton, I'm chair of the tree board. I have been for a number of years on the tree board, on and off, and I just want to say that we've got some good news coming down to Tifton.
We'll take it.
It came out of something bad, and that's the Hurricane Michael came about, and the Georgia Forestry Department allocated for southwest Georgia $10,000 if we came up with some matching funds, which we did. And luckily, George Velitas on our board is very good at writing grants, and he took off. I'm going to call him Mr. Live Oak in this city, because he has planted more live oaks than I can shake a stick at. But anyway, we're making the shade, and that's the name of the grant, is Making the Shade in Tifton, and it's to replace the trees that have been lost from Hurricane Michael. There are, I'm not sure if you've seen the press release that has come out, along with that, 165 native trees that have been selected, and they range in small to large, but mostly large, because we want to create a canopy for our city. They are to be planted in public areas. Now, that includes right-ofways and parks, and we teamed up with the housing authority, and we're trying to team up with some other areas. But what the grant basically is, we're going to plant these trees, and the deadline is March 31st, 165 trees. A lot of them have already been marked. Saturday, well, last week, a group of us went to the north side of town in a green space, and we marked some, and then we went in the south side and we marked some. The housing area over there behind 8th Street will be the first that will be planted, and they've already been marked, and we're going to kick off with Arbor Day. Arbor Day usually falls in February, but I think we're going to try to get it as close to, you know, we can, as a kickoff. With that grant, we also have an adopt a tree program for the community, because in the first three years of a tree being planted is very critical for its survival, particularly in South Georgia. That's why we chose native trees, because they're more adaptable to our climate and periods of drought. So we're asking citizens to adopt a tree or trees in that area. Now, it can be a citizen, an organization, a business, whoever wants to love this tree, and it's very minimal love for three years. We're asking them to water it, particularly during the growing season, May through October, at least four times. Right now, George, luckily we have the resources, goes out and waters what the historic district has planted. He and his wife personally go out and water.
See the little white truck coming with the big plastic bin on it, that's George.
Right, and the city has, has chipped in some in some areas when they can, but their resources are very limited. So we're asking citizens if they will go out and water at least four times during these critical periods, anywhere from three to five gallons of water each watering. Now, and mulch them, keep them mulched, and keep all the weeds pulled from there. Now, these tree species range from long-leaked pines, which is why we're here, if it wasn't for the long-leaked pine, Tifton wouldn't exist. And so we've got long-leaked pines all the way up to the state tree of the live oak. So we're hoping that citizens will step forward, I know I am, I'm going to try to tomorrow, get assisted living in a church to, well, we're going to plant them on the right-ofway, but agree to let me adopt those trees so I can go out and water them at those, at that time. I'm trying to think of what it, so you water, you keep the weeds from it, you make sure it's mulched, you don't do any pruning or fertilizing of this, so it's nothing, it's very minimal. I think I've covered everything. Jessica has it, it'll be posted on the website, we'll give it to the individual or the group. I'm going to open the floor for questions, because I don't know what else I can cover on that.
Well, we just want to say thank you to the tree board. We have all had the opportunity to engage with visitors and guests that come into our community, and I can't tell you how many times I've met with people who have commented on how beautiful the trees are in our community. And you don't have to go too far to go to communities where they've taken down all the trees, or you go through neighborhoods where there are no trees, and the difference that it makes in the aesthetics of the community and the environmental aspect of everything. So we greatly appreciate the work of the tree board and what you do. I think this is, this is just outstanding. So thank you so much for, one, finding the grant, and then, two, applying for it, and I know it's in partnership with the Heritage Foundation, Tifton Heritage Foundation, and yes, I would encourage any citizen or business or civic organization or Sunday School group or whatever, Bridge Club, whatever, to adopt these trees, because poor George, he, he makes the rounds. It's a lot to, for one man to do with his, his little watering cart, but it's certainly beneficial, and will pay off for generations to come. Living in the historic district, you know, we have these beautiful oak trees that were planted 100 years ago, and we've lost so many of them, but I'm so thankful that 100 years ago, the citizens of this community sought to plant those trees. It really makes a difference in how our community looks. So thank you for that. I'll open the floor if any of the other council members have any comments or questions.
Mayor, Council, Lori, I know Michael Mitchum works closely with the board, so I know we did all the locates for this effort, and that was a mass, it was just a huge undertaking. So the city, we really did our, did our part plus, and we appreciate George's work and the board's work just the same. And just a helpful hint of advice, with trees and if people have questions, Michael and/or Public Works will be glad to answer that, because the worst thing we could do is put a tree right on top of a water meter or by a sewer drain, and in three years, we got to yank it out of the ground. So planting trees is very, very careful, that's our business with underground utilities, and I'll make that, just, just a request that anything we could do to help on the, before it's planted, it will certainly do our part too, so I wanted to share that.
And thank you for thinking about our housing authority properties. Lots of kids in these neighborhoods, so to have some shade, that was the name of the program, was Making the Shade, and so teaching them the importance of taking care of our environment, I think is important. So thank you for thinking of them, that's, I think that's very important, it says a lot for the mission of the group, so.
I just want to thank you for, for the work you do on the board. I know it's voluntary, and we appreciate it.
It's a wonderful board because of, of the citizens in this, in this community, and whether we get board members that are not, not very knowledgeable, they just have a passion, or someone who's very knowledgeable, you know, of, of the environment, it's really, it's a fun board to work with.
We appreciate it.
Yes, thank you. All right, thank you, Lori, appreciate that. All right, the next item on our agenda is our consent agenda, and as you know, these are all items that we've talked about in our workshops. We can take them individually, or we can take them as one, one item on the consent agenda. So I'll leave that up to you council members to decide how you want to handle that.
I move we approve them in total.
In total, okay. So items three through 10 would be approved together. I have a motion from Councilman Volk, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, thank you. We have a second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Under new business, we have discussion and extension of the ordinance 2020-23, which is what we approved requiring the use of masks or face coverings in public. So Pete, do you have information you would present to us on that, or just open the floor for discussion?
I don't. Rob and Jessica, myself, we did have just some discussion on this, and if you remember, this was an ordinance you wanted to put forward with, with particular language, and the only thing that was changing was the time. So the initial ordinance called for 30 days, we did have that on the calendar, so we're bringing that back before you. We don't need to do another ordinance, but just based off of your, your desire on how you want to see this either go forward or just.
What's the expiration date of the current ordinance we're under? Is it January 30th?
It's like the.
I think it's the 21st, ma'am.
Next couple of days.
Okay.
So it's just, it's timely, and again, if you want to do another 30 days, so we just need to know, so the ordinance continues to be fluid, just like a moratorium, and we'll keep it on our calendar if that's what you desire.
Okay, all right.
Mayor, let me make some comments. We've had over 400,000 people die in the United States. We've had over 11,000 in Georgia, 80 in, in Tiff County. We can debate whether it had to happen or not, but we didn't know early on about the importance of masks. But now we do know that masks work. When you wear a mask, you're saying, I respect my neighbors. When you wear a mask, you're saying, I respect nurses and doctors. When you wear a mask, you're saying, I respect other people. Yes, people have rights, but more importantly, they have responsibilities. And I hear that, you know, people will do the right thing, in a lot of cases, that's true, you know, and we shouldn't mandate things. But I guess unfortunately, people don't always do the right thing, but most people will abide by the law. And I think we're seeing that, because when we passed this ordinance, the cases were over 600 per 100,000. You know, the governor's given us the ability, if they're over 100, we can end this. Well, now they've dropped, they're just below, they did today, drop just below 500 per 100,000. When I go places, and maybe it's a false perception, but I see more masks being worn, and it's not because they're scared of getting fined or this, but like I say, most people, if it's a law, they're going to do it. Now, some people are just not going to follow anyway, like the person that threw trash out the other day when I'm standing, they just throw trash out on the street. Okay, well, there's no help to that, you know, or those that just blindly run through stop signs, and I've had that discussion. So I, I believe what we have done with this mandate has, has made people think about it, they've done the right thing and want to follow the law. In my mind, again, to get this economy going, we have to get the pandemic under control, make it safe for people to go shop at these places, and that's behind my, my whole thing as well. I mean, safety's number one, but two is to make it safe places for them to go out and to shop if they know it's there, and there are people that won't go. So with that being said, I'd like to make a motion to extend the mandate in the same terms we had before for another 30 days.
Okay, all right. So we have a motion on the floor from Councilman Volk, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second from Councilman Terrell. Any further discussion?
I would just, I'd just like to piggyback on what Jack says. I don't think anybody who doesn't vote for the mask mandate is saying that we don't think masks work. I think a multitude of different things help prevent the spread of COVID-19. You know, the county's done a fantastic job with their outreach program. I mean, the mandate, along with the education, you know, I think the last week of a year, so many people, I mean, every time I talk to somebody, they say, yeah, I got it over, you know, the Christmas holidays, you know, it may have been a mild case or whatnot, but in other cases, it was not so mild. You know, it may have been a mild case or whatnot, but in other cases, it was not so mild. You know, I just don't know if it's local government's, local government's job to dictate the mask mandate or whatnot. But at the same time, I'm not saying that, you know, people who are going to vote against this or don't believe in masks or anything like that, that's just not, that's not true. You know, we've just got to, you know, understand that, you know, prevention is more than just masks. So, I'll just say that.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Wes, for those comments. Any other comments, questions before I call for the vote? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, and those opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Okay, so, we have three in favor and two, again, same as we had before. So, that does pass. The next item on our agenda is the city manager report, so Pete.
Okay, maybe just two items. I want to let you know that a contractor hit a four-inch gas line at the hospital this afternoon. And it was, obviously, our team reacted very, very quickly, and they evacuated a lot of folks out of the buildings. But that's a real serious thing when you talk about natural gas and a four-inch line. So, but it is handled, it is secure.
Jeff wants to say.
Okay, so, it is repaired. So, that's, you know, that's good stuff when a contractor reacts fastly and gets that repaired. So, natural gas is no joke. And while we're talking about natural gas, we're a member of what's called HEAT. That's a heating and energy assistance team in Georgia. Very good program for natural gas. And what this does, this HEAT, is if you're a member, you ask your customers throughout the year if they would donate a little extra on the utility bill. And during the times when it's cold and there's natural gas flowing to heat homes, HEAT actually reaches out, helps the elderly, disabled, and those that are having trouble with the utility bills. So, I wanted to tell you, our residents stepped up again. We raised over $4,100 to aid in, for natural gas and to help for utility bills. And I wanted to share that good news with you, because it's all about our community and our utility customers caring for the residents themselves. So, great program, and I wanted to share that with you.
Okay.
That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Pete. All right, we have mayor and council comments. Anybody like to volunteer to go first? Councilman Terrell, if you raise your hand.
Well, I really, I guess I will. I think I, to reiterate, that I thank the council. Excuse me, for the work that's been done in my district. It's been a long time coming. And I really, really thank you for all this council, for all you've done to improve my district. And thank you very much.
You just wait, Johnny, the best is yet to come, it's coming. You just wait. It's good stuff. Well, it takes, it takes all of us working together.
Yeah, thank you.
And we are all Tifton, one Tifton. And it's not north, south, east, west, black, white, it doesn't matter, we are one Tifton. And so, we are proud to be able to stand with you and stand with your district and.
That's why I think this council, we just one council.
That's right.
One council.
That's exactly right. There you go. All right, anybody want to go next?
I mean, I'll go, ma'am.
Okay.
I've pretty much said all I need to say to ma'am. You know, I'll just touch.
MJ, any comments?
No comments.
Okay. There you go, my friend. All right, bye, sir, mayor.
I'm good.
You're good, all right. Well, I'll wrap things up very quickly. I did want to let the council know that, you know, I'm very involved with Georgia Municipal Association, have the very distinct honor of representing not only Tifton, but representing our state as our second vice president with GMA. And the executive committee has made the decision to move the convention that's normally in the summer in Savannah. We're going to postpone it for a couple of months to August. Everything that we're hearing is that will be a little bit safer, the vaccine will have a little more time to be in effect, that type of thing. So, not to say that it couldn't necessarily be postponed in August, but we have our fingers crossed and hope that we'll be able to meet together again in Savannah in August. And I'm sure we'll still be masked and following all the protocol and procedures. I also wanted to let you know that, if you'll recall, after the horrific death of Ally Johnson and the other, some of the other terrible issues that we had with youth in our community and the violence against youth, we had a meeting here in this council chambers just to discuss that and share our concerns and what we can do. And we had a smaller group of people that met last week that came out of this big group. We decided to get some smaller groups together and try to discuss some items. So, we have another meeting scheduled next week. I believe it's next Wednesday at one o'clock here. And we'll be bringing in, what we did was in that smaller meeting was broke things down into kind of manageable topics that we can then discuss and maybe bring other experts and resources in to help with this. So, the first of our official meetings for our topics will be next Wednesday, and that topic is going to be on community and safety. And so, our police chief will be there to talk with us. And it's very informal, if you'd like to come in, be in this meeting, we'll distance, we'll mask up and everything. But I just wanted to have a very open and frank discussion on what we can do and the resources we can provide to our community. And in closing, I just want to say I'm very excited. At our last meeting, I talked about the change of, you know, new year, what a new year can bring. And tomorrow, we're going to go through an inauguration where our forty-sixth president will be inaugurated. And my prayer for our city, our state, and certainly our nation is that that goes on successfully, peacefully, and quietly. And change is difficult. We see that just going through a change in a garbage contract. I can't imagine what it would be like to be in our president-elect's shoes or our outgoing president's shoes. But I just want to, you know, offer my hope and prayer for success for our community, our state, and our country. And I've heard this so many times over the last couple of weeks, we're so much more alike than we are different. And there's more that unites us and brings us together than drives us apart. So, as we go into this new time for our country with new leadership, whether you voted for these people or not, know that we are all in this together. We are all Americans, we are all Georgians, and we are all Tifton. And so, that's all of my comments for the evening. If there's anything else that needs to come before the council, anything else? All right, MJ, you good?
I'm good.
All right, well, we're going to sign off, my friend. So, that brings our meeting to a close, and I just appreciate everyone being here this evening, and thank you for all that you do.